City Council meeting, March third, seven P M. Um, who would stand for our parents, they stand for the question. Adam, would you mind?
I'm most loving and gracious heavenly Father, we just thank you for these council members that are willing to give their time and effort to help run our community in great its betterment. Please bless them with the wisdom to make our community a better place to live. Thank you for the blessings that you give all of us, guide us and direct us in all we do, in Christ's name, amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Bert?
Yes. Uh, hey. Mitzi?
Here.
Richard?
Here.
Jackie?
Here.
And Laura.
So you all had the minutes from the last meeting. Do I have a motion to approve the minute? How much will you approve the minutes? Got a motion made to approve the minutes from the last second. Motion made in second. All those in favor? Turning old business from previous meetings? Moving on to business items for this meeting. The final budget um for twenty twenty-five, it was adjusted.
Yeah, well, no, we didn't adjust it, we just need to find a approval on it, we didn't read it just it.
Need a motion to approve the budget?
Motion to approve.
Motion made to approve the budget.
I say.
Motion made and seconded. All those in favor? Next item on the agenda is Resolution one twenty-two. Federal research and we are eligible now for another fun part grant. It is um a worthwhile endeavor. I'm trying to start the process now. I don't know exactly what all this is going to encapsulate. But it's going to be betterment for the park down at the um down at the plant down there. So potentially updating some of the equipment um and some park benches around. It's just, this is to enable me to apply for it.
How much of a grant?
Well, it's up to a hundred thousand dollars. No match. Up to, they're not going, I'm sure, I'm not gonna say they won't, but um I'm gonna, I'll shoot for the moon, you know, and see what we can get. Um, with that, I'd like to ask Ms. Kelly, there's a, there's money left over from the last grant, is that correct? For the park.
Yes, I'm the wrong person.
Who's got the money for the grant, for the park?
There's absolutely no money left over for the last grant.
But there's, is there any money in a grant account or park account? And what is that, is that for the park maintenance, or is that?
For events.
For events?
So in the park, pumpkin festival, therefore.
How is that funded?
Donations.
Okay.
Or sun grazers.
Perfect. So, and that's maintained solely separate from city, correct? Is that a nonprofit or something, five oh one C three, or anything like that?
One hundred percent donations, it was started by the lawnmower racers.
Okay. But it's not a five oh one C three?
It's not, it's not connected to the city at all.
Okay.
Never has been. Leftover and grant money?
Nothing.
Don't tend to go together.
Yep. I just wanna make sure that there was any money left over. You had said that there's an account for the city park, and I didn't know what that monies were, and if it's just donations for events. And y'all are maintaining that, that's perfectly, I just didn't, so, making sure, okay? Uh, but this is, this would allow me, and moving on, this would allow me to move forward with applying for it, and we need to get, um, there's some deadlines. There's some things that need to happen prior to, so you will be looped in on every step of this um to in, to include, what do we want to put in this park? But this is the first step. So.
Before we move on from that?
Yes.
Uh, the reason I was asking about the five oh one C three status, it might, it might be worth thinking about as forming a friends of Leslie City Parks or whatever. The reason I'm saying that is uh a lot of the banks and financial institutions around the, the area, they're all mandated to give money away to the communities, right?
Those are the ones that typically do donations? And it kind of is a friends of?
Okay, so what I was gonna say is, when you talk to those folks, they, they're uh, they're more, they're more accepting to, to give to the five oh one C threes because they're legitimate write-offs for them than things like that, so it's just something to think about. If, especially if uh, if the account gets big enough and you want it, you want it to increase it, or uh you know, it could, it would have nothing to do with the city, it could just be a nonprofit where, wherein either businesses or banks in the area might contribute. You know, some, some funding to it.
So I can speak to that directly. I went to ask Simmons Bank for money for an event that was coming up. I had, I told her what we were wanting to do was Jeeping it classy, and she said, yeah, I'll give you up to five hundred bucks, I think it was at the time, but I, and she was unless you were a five oh one C three. And I said, well, as a matter of fact, Leslie Merchants Association is now a five oh one C three. And they have a ton of, not, I say ton, it's a ton of money to us to give away to those organizations, and it's, it's mandated that they do that, so. She had said there's a lot more money to do that, so to that point, if y'all wanna think about setting up as a five oh one C three, I think that'd be a great idea, so. Yep. Um, I will need a motion to allow me to move forward with. Got a motion made? Motion made and seconded. All those in favor? Has anybody signed up for public comments? Okay?
Oh, I thought it was me getting an idea.
Oh, I'm not doing public comments, oh, that was true.
She's on the guest list.
I thought it was your guest list.
So I went ahead and here's, I see the I see the, the, the mix-up. I actually put up a public, that's for Alan. For those that come in, he'd like to know who's here, a sign-in. I went ahead and put another list out for public comments, so if anybody wants to transfer their name to the public comments, we'll take it as yes or no.
I am, would like to speak on buildings.
You will. I will set the timer.
Okay, please do, because I don't wanna talk that long. Uh, just wanted to bring up that uh, at the end of this month, we have uh, in conjunction with Cersei County Cleanup, the twenty-eighth and twenty-ninth of this month um is when Cersei County's doing the cleanup. And um, I will finalize, but I'd like to have some uh, T-shirts, bags, trash bags, and things here um, here at City Hall available for folks to be able to do cleanup. I'm not planning a big cleanup like we did last time, but I think we need to look forward to this fall to do another big cleanup like we did, it was year, two years ago, I think, or a year and a half ago, to where we do tires again, computer electronics, and do all those things again. I'd like to do that again, because I think it's time. Um, but I just encourage everyone and um, council members with your constituents, uh, encourage cleanup in the area, because spring is sprung, so. Twenty-eighth and twenty-ninth of March.
That's it?
Yep.
I can stop the timer. I didn't want it to go off anyway. Anybody else, um, council? Anything y'all wanna add, or? Alright, first off, congratulations Hayden to the, on the birth of his new, new child.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Eleanor.
Eleanor, congratulations. Lots of sleepless nights, or what?
I don't wanna jinx it or anything, but she's actually been a very sleepy, quiet baby, so.
Um, spoke to R dot the day after my birthday, by the way.
Oh, uh.
Almost. Spoke to R dot um, for an update on this project out here. Um, the res, I spoke to Jared Wiley, and he referred me to the project engineer, the lead. If all of y'all know that the project letting date is supposed to be April, and it's actually looking like it's going to be, uh, I'll just read the email, "The project is not going to be ready for the op, April letting. The right-of-way acquisition is still going on." So there's still right-of-way issues. Also, we have not received schedules from the utility companies on the job, so they have to do relocation for all the utilities in the area. Our best estimated timeframe is the end of July for utility relocation, so we can be ready for letting in August, and letting means open for bids. However, we'll have to see what kind of schedule they provide us. Feel free to reach out if you have any other questions. So that's what's going on with the, the bridge. Relocation. There is another project here in the, in, in Leslie, um, project zero one two three six five. It's repaving of sixty-six from here to the county line. And even further, it's another ten miles past that, but we're concerned about Leslie. It's not scheduled till twenty twenty-six, so it's ten point one nine miles.
Is that what a lot of the clearing is that's going on? Is that involved with that?
No, that is, that is R dot, our local. Each year they get into a lull of work, so that's something to fill the time, and that's what the, the focus is. I used to work for, and that's what we did. So, and they're reclaiming their right-of-ways. And doing that helps in the wintertime and, and melt off the snow on the roads. So getting it opened up a little more, so that's what they're, what they're doing.
Because it didn't look like anything to do with power lines or anything.
No.
What they were doing.
They're just reclaiming some.
Reclaiming their land, got you.
Um, you're welcome. As you know, that we've, we're getting a, the large grant, it's still in the process. But with that, we need to discuss a couple items. Next year, um, maybe this year, we will have to do what they call a single-source audit. If you spend a million dollars of federal funds in a year, you have to do a single-source audit. Okay, it'll be this year and potentially next year. So we will have to come out and to, we have to come out of pocket to pay for that audit. So, that audit will be about ten to fifteen thousand dollars per year, okay? This year, ten to fifteen, next year, ten to fifteen. I called um, contacts in Little Rock to see if the administrative fees could transfer over, it cannot um, for the grant. We have to come out of pocket, ten to fifteen thousand dollars to get audited on that grant. So I want you all to know that upfront, that that is going to be an expense that's not on this budget, okay?
And is that for the water improvement?
Yes, it's for the water line rehabilitation, phase two. That's just, I didn't, there's nothing we could have done about it, it's just, that's what they call a single-source audit, so. It used to be over seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars, you had to have a single source, they raised it to a million. We're gonna hit that threshold of this year. So, just be warned.
So does that, the, does the um, the yearly um, be an audit, is it tied to like the project completion? In other words, if we complete the project uh, in a year's time?
If we complete it this year, it's one single-source audit.
But if it, but if it extends out into the next year, it doesn't matter how long?
And we spend a, a million dollars.
Oh, okay, for that year.
For that year.
Okay.
So it's, if that's the threshold, is the money.
Thank you. Calendar year, or is it, does it start from when the, when the project starts, you know what I mean? Calendar year, okay.
Yep. So, that's, that's where we're at. The water rate increase, I don't know if any of y'all saw, I posted this. Um, the post office here, our community center, like we've said in our ordinance, that we can post this in five, five spots. We're doing a public hearing on raising the water and sewer rates, so um I'll read it, "Public hearing regarding the proposed increase in sewer water rates is scheduled for Friday, March the fourteenth, twenty twenty-five, at six P M. Um, City Hall, five sixteen Main, this session will provide residents with an opportunity to learn about the details of the proposed rating adjustments, pose questions, and offer feedback directly to city officials. The city purchases water from various sources and experiences annual rate increases. Consequently, the city will raise its rates equivalent to the supplier's increase to cover the costs associated with providing water services. Additionally, a rate study conducted by Arkansas Rural Water on June thirteenth, twenty twenty-four determined that the current sewer rates are insufficient. The proposed rate increase will take effect for the May billing cycle. The sewer and water rate adjustments are essential to support the continued operations of the Water Utilities Department, including routine maintenance and necessary repairs." Found out, Alan found out, yes, today.
Today.
Um, Ozark Mountain Regional, they went up two percent. We knew that this year, January, they went up two percent. South Mountain went up two percent last summer, and then two percent this January. So they're four percent. Westone County went up twenty percent. Twenty percent is what they went up on their, and that's a handful of customers up on Old Sixty-six.
Normally, it's two.
Normally, it's two percent, they had a, a, a big gap in their funding, and they needed to, but twenty percent is what. So, when they do that and we do nothing, we're eating that cost, and we are going and will go in the hole every time. So, the, these rate increases are necessary, and I, I, I don't like rate increases, but the more we pay for water, we can't just eat it, so.
So the, so the, the two percent and, and the four percent are water alone, correct?
Yes.
So then our sewer increase is based on that audit? So it just happens that they're both happening pretty much same time and?
But the, it will also capture with the, the per gallon with the, the rate increase of the water.
Yeah, oh, yeah, right.
Because the gallon, and that's how they base the sewage uses.
But it's, but it's not just a direct, it's also another increase because of the audit as well, okay?
So.
Double whammy.
It's a double whammy, um. I wanted to do the public hearing um, March the fourteenth, so we have time to do a um, to hear it at City Council next month, and then it go into effect the following month. So, that's what's that's what's going on, and I can address any questions pertaining to, or um, even from the audience, and I'll, I'll entertain that, if anybody has any questions.
Was that the fourteenth or seventeenth you said?
Fourteenth. Um, hearing none, I'm gonna move forward. Um, the fire department grant, um, I just got it closed out today. That's the um, with Arkansas Economic Development, our turnout gear and the bags and all that stuff, the grant is now closed. So, and there is what y'all's, it's a bad picture, but there's what your money went to, is new turnouts and um, bags and pass devices.
So, uh, kind of an administrative question, now that that's closed out, does that mean if there's others out there, we're, we're able to apply now?
Okay. Yep. I spoke to um, Oliver Myers and Elijah, um, Elijah Snow the other day. They're with Congressman and Senator Bozeman and Congressman Rick Crawford. There is money out there from the federal. I have an application. It's what they call C D S spending, and they go to their, to, while they're doing their budget up there at DC, they're like, hey, city of Leslie needs a million bucks for X, Y, and Z. They can earmark that, they could, used to, it used to be earmarks, now it's C D S, congressionally-directed spending. It's just something that congressmen do. I'm gonna find the need, and I'm gonna apply for it on both of them, I don't care Bozeman or Crawford. And it's, it's uh, nothing out of our pocket, so. On, the other day, I went and met with Tim Mays up at E S I in uh, Springdale, I went to his office and got a nice little tour of their facility and kinda got eyes on of what they do up there, and, and just wanted to thank him for doing, and his staff did, for doing what they, they do a lot for us. So, um, that was after I was leaving the uh, Governor's Conference on Tourism, so. It was up there, I said, let me just pop in, so, saw that, was good. Um, the C D B G grant, that was the water lines in town that we just had done, it's not done yet, okay? And what, what's um, it's holding on is a property inspection for somebody's home. They're holding the money, okay? The, the construction company hasn't been paid final until they get that into this house, that's the inspection. The homeowner says, hey, I have, I have concerns about their foundation, so they, they, we need to get an inspector, we don't. They need to get an inspector in there, look at the foundation, and thumbs up, thumbs down, however, and then they will get paid, we can close that grant out.
So, so is all of that between the property owner and the construction company and the uh?
Yes.
Engineering?
Yes, not engineering, well, engineering, yes, because, yes.
Okay. That really didn't have anything to do with us other than they're, we'll hear about it, right?
We'll hear about it. I've been checking with homeowner, saying, hey, have you heard from them? And I just spoke yesterday, and they didn't hear from the inspection company yet, but they should if they wanted to pay, or if that fits. The parking lot next door, I don't know if anybody saw, it's near complete, um, we need to paint lines. I, we paid, paid it off today, and I'm waiting for a check from Buffalo River um, B R C D C um, for Buffalo River Community Development Corporation for seventy-five hundred bucks. I've notified them today, I've sent them the invoice, and they will send us a check, so waiting on that. I needed paint lines, as you see, there's nice lines out there right now, two-by-fours, but I'm working on it, so. Speaking to that, I decided to move the E V charging down at the very end, okay? Because if I was to move the E V chargers up here by the door, that doesn't give locals enough parking. I mean, it's just, it's, it's a really hard parking spot. It's not, it's not big enough, I wish it was bigger. But I moved it to the other end. I feel like it would be best used down there. And we have enough parking spots, we gained five spots, so.
Interesting tidbit on the, uh, on the E V charging.
Yes.
The very first aircraft in Arkansas got charged at uh, I wanna say Pocahontas, this is just a couple weeks ago. So it's coming.
So we need a runway.
Yeah, yeah, hey, I told you about that.
We need a runway.
I'd love to be doing my business, but anyways, I just thought it was a neat, first time ever in this, in the state of Arkansas, an electric plane was charged. It's coming.
Well, they can land right down here and charge up to.
What's the range on those?
I don't even, I just so new, I don't know. And, and I didn't hear, they showed the plan, but.
Spoke to the installer for this E V charging, um. They are still on a project, on a big electrical job, they should be done by this weekend. They're still waiting on the base, they have the chargers, they're waiting on the base to come in, um, it should be this month, I hope, fingers crossed. Took out an ad um, in the paper this week, y'all may have seen it, I don't know if the paper come out yet, I don't think so.
Well, it comes out on Wednesday.
Huh?
Comes out on Wednesday.
Yeah, well, it's, it's print today, I think, is what they do. Um, request for sealed bids for mowing. Um, period of, work period, let me see my notes. Well, it's talking about trash pickup, regular mowing, trimming, um, and ensuring public areas are well-kept and presentable, work period is from May one to October one. Um, contact here for a map. Sealed bids must be received by four April, um, and they will be open at City Council on April the seventh. So. And they will come, when they come to get a map, I will have them come, and I, I, I missed telling them on the paper that you must present to council or be available, so.
Do we wanna do anything with like a, a job description for that, or for any like employees of the, of the, of the city? And what I mean by that is, you know, um, when you go, let's say to uh, the go out for new bids or whatever, you're, you're getting, you're, you're, you're gonna update the contract or whatever. A, a job description with details of what all the job entails for like city, city employees, mowing, whatever it is, just so that like when we're all gone, somebody else is not thinking, okay, now we need a new, and what all does that entail, you know? And what all, what, what comes with that job, what requirements are there, what is it that we expect of them, all of those things? A job description.
So job description for city employees, for mayor, for Alan, or Alex, or?
Anybody that's, I'm just bringing it up as.
I don't think we have a handbook here.
Okay.
Um, I think that could be something that we develop, I mean, we.
This might be a good one to start with, is the, is, is the mowing, you know, having the map in, in, in in there as well as part of the, the job description, uh, details. It, it, it'll help with the hiring, I think, and then in the future, if we need to, if we needed to replace that person for whatever reason, uh, you know, it's something to go straight back to and say, you know, I have to try to remember what it was we, we wanted him to do, it's right there in writing. Just an idea.
Okay. Anybody else have any input on that?
Not necessarily a good one.
Yeah.
I'll be glad to put something together for this mowing one. I got Chat G P T, it's easy.
Okay? Why don't you try that, let me see?
He said mowing, weeding, and trimming, what?
So the trimming.
What's that, what's that about?
So this is for the maintaining, main, maintenance of the, the rights of ways, the ditches and the
Yeah.
It's the same thing we did last year.
Okay, so the trimming don't make another, other than mowing, weeding?
Trimming and mowing and trimming the rights of ways, that's what this, this bid is for, so. I missed a session on Friday in Berryville, uh, because I was here um, doing a ribbon cutting. The session was with Arkansas Municipal League on cleaning up rundown properties. So, wasn't able So, wasn't able to go, there will be more coming, more sessions coming, I will go. There's more legislature out there addressing this as well. So, I need to dig in and find out what that is, but there's things coming down the pipe around for them, so.
And, and in that same regard, I know, Mitzi, you talked about there was one lot that was on the corner. I forgot exactly where it might have been on Sherry, I think, where it's, it's like, it's gotten so bad that it, you can't really see.
Yeah, it's just, going up more nice high street there, I think.
Okay.
What's that other street there?
You're talking about Victor's house?
Victor's is there.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I went there yet today, um, and spoke to the neighbor across the street. I plan on going to clean up that corner, um, and he is willing to help me.
And I was gonna say, and, and include us in that too, me and Tammy, cause uh, you know, there, to me, well, yeah, to me, there's, there's, you know, if you, if you're not doing it and you're able to do it, that's one thing, right? But if, if you're not doing it because A, there's nobody living there anymore, the people are deceased or whatever, and their relatives aren't around or something like that. In other words, for, for different cases, scenarios, to me, there's different, but if somebody can't do it and they just physically can't do it, I, I'd love to, we would love to help at least do an initial and then work with them on trying to figure out how to go forward with it. So, you know, include us in if you, if you do that and maybe uh anybody else that would, would like to.
There is a couple of properties up there that I, well, there's one right below the corner house, um, I spoke to their neighbor today. The gentleman doesn't live there anymore. It needs to be cleaned up, the one on the corner, and as a matter of fact, there's a notice on the door and they said the mortgage company, I guess locked it out and says no one to be u, to live here. So I don't know where he lives, but he doesn't live there. Bear. Bear?
Bear.
Next to Joe Michael Bear that lived there?
Oh, next to Joe.
There's a, there's, that property needs to be cleaned up, there's trash, the debris, the, the yard. Um, and the catty corner up on that corner. So, I mean, we could schedule a workday, I mean, I, I have no problem.
Clean up on the twenty eighth to twenty ninth?
We can do it on the twenty eighth, twenty ninth.
I was just gonna say, if we're already cleaning up, that could be some groups.
I mean, there's a couple of properties that I know that um need it, so. Yeah. Um, as you heard, um conducted a ribbon cutting out here on Friday for kinetic, we are now a gig community, whatever that, you know, it's, we're gig ready. If you wanted gig download, internet speed, you can get that. We're one of fifteen in the state. So. That's a, kind of a big deal. I spoke to Ms. Rippey today, she is the lead for our um, working with Logan and our community. Strategic planning, thank you. Um, she is the lead, she's reached out to Logan a couple of times, um.
We're just finding the phone tag.
Phone tag, and she, he reached out today, so she has the sample survey questions that will be coming out. We'll be looking for help, I'm sure, so. Our application to be a tree city in twenty twenty-four was approved, we're now, we're, it's, it's um done nationally, so we're deep in a classy, we're looking at doing it again, uh, the merchants association, I'm kind of help, helping them with that and trying to pin down a date. Looks like October the eleventh is when we're gonna do that. Yeah. Going on to when we were talking about mowing and, um, last, let's readdress this issue from last month and it was mowing city park or community center. I will tell you how I personally feel. I feel like Alex has done a good job. I s, I feel like it needs to still be after hours. We were paying him eleven dollars an hour. He's using the city mower, city gas. I feel that that's a good deal for the city. If, if you were to try to get someone else out there, see what, how much that would cost you. So, we can, if that's the way you all want to go, but that's how I, I feel, I feel like Alex can do it in his after hours at the current rate, at eleven dollars an hour.
So, so that's separate from what we're talking about?
That's separate from the mowing contract.
Yeah, okay.
The contract is to do mowing for the ditches, for the rights of ways. That's my personal.
Actually, I think he just needs to be strictly a waterman.
But if he, what if, okay, so in his off time, that's, this is his off time.
This is his off time.
This is his off time, I mean, it's.
Find something to do.
And that's what he's looking.
Or, you know, not mowing.
Well, I'm not gonna tell the man how, what he can and cannot do in his off time. I understand, I hear what you're saying, but it's.
If he's hard for the city, he needs to be water and sewer. That's what he was hard to do, wasn't he, Dela? You, you stressed the whole time, he was strictly a water and sewer man.
That is what he's doing, but after hours, after hours, he's like everybody else in this room.
But he don't want to mow after hours, he's wanting to do it in, when he ain't doing that.
Well, that's not what we're, that's not on the table.
He does it after hours.
That is not on the table. I'll just tell you that right now, mowing during, during duty hours is not on the table. And I'll, crystal clear. But, or what, what we can do is we can open up for bids and that would be fine too, and then we open up community center down there, the, and then the city park. And then I think that the city will come out a lot more.
Absolutely.
It would be, I know somebody that mows for sixty dollars an hour. And that's how much they charge me. And it's, and that's standard. So I feel like um mowing after hours, um, personally, that's my, but this is you all and let's have that conversation.
So, so how long uh have, has Alex been doing that? At eleven dollars?
Two or three years.
Two or three years, yeah, since I've been here, I know.
And I mean, I've, 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 I've never seen any, personally, I've never, I don't have any issues with it, it seems like he's doing a good job. You know, as far as the, you know, not talking about when he does it, but as far as the, the quality of, of, of mowing and everything looks good.
I personally would like to see the whole thing combined, the, the ditches, the park, the community center. And I came up with a figure of two thousand two hundred and fifty dollars, which would combine what we paid for doing the ditches and what we paid for Alex. Uh, which comes out somewhere around forty some bucks an hour. So, that's just my thought on the deal. To combine everything together.
So, when we ask a bidding co, or a company to bid it, we, you're saying bid that too?
That's just, just my thought.
What about, what about everything else I mow? I don't mow just those, I mow the plant, I mow the lift stations, everything else, all on the same, that's all separate.
Okay, so you're telling me a whole different thing, cause all I know is the park and community center.
Yeah, I mow everything, all except for, all at my own time.
He uses a city mower?
Yes. Yep. To do, to mow after hours.
Don't agree with that.
Okay.
He needs his own mower. If you want the job, you need your own tools and.
Then why didn't we buy a mower sixteen years ago?
Yeah, I wouldn't have a problem with that.
Why didn't we buy a mower sixteen years ago?
So you can mow the sewer plant.
But I shouldn't do it.
That's why your job doesn't matter, you just mow sewer plant.
Why should I, why should I do it after hours if you only, why should I do it after hours if you're not gonna pay me to do it? If it's something I should do on my own dime, but doing it in hours is off the table, so that's not really hashing out, that's, that's not working. Something else is gonna have to change there. You know what I mean? If I'm not allowed to mow it during hours, why would I mow the plant after hours if I'm not gonna get paid for it?
You can mow the plants during yours working day hours.
So I'd like to make a suggestion.
Do you clock in, what time you clock in, or do you clock in?
Seven o'clock.
You clock in.
I don't.
You clock in and out, you've got.
I got a time sheet, I start at seven o'clock and I end, I play at three thirty every day, that gives you eight hours, that gives you forty hours a week.
Do you have ledger telling what you do every day?
I've got it, I hand him the sheet, got copies of it.
What you do, every move you make, and what you're doing, and what you're doing.
What I'd like to suggest, uh, is an idea is a job description, plain and simple, that, that fixes all of this to me, or a lot of it, okay? In other words, uh, if, if Alex was hired to do water and sewer and maintain the area around that that he, where he works, okay? That should, that should be in that, that would be in that job description, right? Cause then that should be done, in my opinion, on the clock, right? That's part of his job.
Exactly.
He does water sewer, maintains the, the grounds around those areas. So, maybe as an idea, start with a job description of, uh, you know, um, water sewer, that job, okay? Then another one for mowing, and at that time, un, unless we're in some super rush, uh, at that time, we can, we can us, right here, can decide, what do we want that mowing contractor to do? We can put it in the description, we can put it on the maps, we can put about, you know, the frequency of it, all of that, so that there's no question as to who does what and, you know, going forward and into the future, it'll be well-defined, it could always be modified at a different time, but that's exactly to me what a job description's for. I've never really had a job or worked anywhere where I didn't have a job description. Where I, when I hired on, you know, they didn't tell me, these are your, these are your responsibilities, these, this is your, your description, do you understand it, right? And then that way, moving forward, there's no confusion as to what, whether or not, oh, that's not my job, or that is my job, it's, it's laid out.
Uh, I, I, I agree with what you're saying, but that'd be enough to get more than one person.
Do you have?
You got one person.
Do you don't have a job description right now, do you? Like, it's everything.
Well, yeah, I mean, that, if you got more than one person, I see what you're saying, but you've got one person doing everything.
No, my point is.
Take care of everything that the city got.
And, and so, this, this will benefit you because again, to me, because it'll, it'll be, it'll be, it'll be a document that shows exactly what it is you're supposed to do, you know, and uh.
And that, and basically, that's how we.
Whether you're one person or no matter how many you are, you know exactly what, what it is you're supposed to do, Monday through Friday.
And, and I guess basically, it kind of, so that's how we gauge raises.
Sure.
You know, if you meet in the checkpoints, I mean, that's performance evaluations.
That would be a big part of it, is are you doing everything?
Because that's how we justify a raise at the first year. Say, well, look, you know, I, I think that'd be a good idea, so, yeah.
Eric, may I say something?
Sure.
So, Alex is using the same time sheet system that the previous water operator used, Ray Barnes.
Yeah.
And Bert, on that time sheet, is the basics that he has to do every day. It's, and each water operator has basics that they have to do, they have to check all kinds of gauges, meters everywhere. So you can hit the high spots, but as far as locking in his every move every day, you're not gonna be able to do that, it's kinda like a flat tire. You don't predict those.
Well, that's not what I, that's not what I'm supposed to do at all, but I wanna lock in what he does every day.
But his time sheet, if you look at his time sheet, he's got the basis of a job description going. Just like if you look at the requirements that the health department requires him to do, as well as ADEQ, he's got the basics going.
Yeah, and, and I'm not disagreeing with that, other, the only thing I'll say is, I don't wanna, I do not wanna schedule a maintenance, a maintenance man's day cause things change through the day, priorities change, everything changes, it's not what I'm saying. What I'm saying is, at one time, the city hired Alex to do a job. He wasn't here, whatever that job is, should be written down somewhere. And you call it whatever you want, I don't care if you call it a job description, you call it a, you know, whatever.
Daily duties.
Uh, whatever you wanna call it, it should have been written down, and the reason why is the conversation we're having tonight. It's a perfect example, let me finish, it's a perfect example of why it should, it should exist, because then we're not you know, Alex saying, well, this is, I, I do the, I do the, do this already, I'm doing the, around the sewer and everything else. And Mitzi says, well, yeah, that's because that's your job, that's what, we, you know, that's part of your job, right? The rest of it is not. So this is a, a chance to clearly define, not just Alex, I'm not picking on Alex, it's anybody that works for the city. This is, this is what you're hired to do, you know, and of course it can be modified, you know, if, if for some reason it needs to be modified, we can always modify it, but uh.
So, do we need to form a committee to do that?
And how many, okay, so this is, again, my ignorance, right? So how many paid employees do we have as, as the city of Leslie? We, we have Bear, okay, we have Alex.
And you all.
And us, okay, so it's not that difficult.
Right.
You know, to do, to do three separate ones, and, and then again, it, it's, 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 it's working on them upfront as a draft. The committee can work it and get it as close as they think it is and then bring it forward to a meeting for everybody to review.
Do I have any volunteers to, to, do I have a volunteer to chair that committee? I got a volunteer to chair the committee, do I have any volunteers to sit on the committee?
Committee one, Jackie, alright.
And?
Just here. Okay.
Okay, so, let the record know that we are forming a committee to, to develop job descriptions for city employees.
And the, and the thing, and, and the one thing that I'll say upfront, uh, I don't think it's gonna be the, the to me, the committee shouldn't go in trouble, we're not gonna go and try to add anything, we're just gonna go in and try to capture it the way we know it today. It may be off, and that's okay, cause it's a draft, and that's what we'll do. Alex will be here in the meeting when we're, when we're reviewing it, right? So, Alex, I want Alex to speak up and say, hey, wait a second, that's not right, right? We can get all that out and we can get it all straight and then moving forward, we don't have conversations like this anymore about, you know, when do they do this? What is it that they do? And again, it will not be a daily schedule for any of the jobs, that's not what I'm looking at.
Do you wanna pose that in a motion by chance? To form a committee?
I would make a motion that we form a committee to draft job descriptions for all employees of the city of Leslie.
Motion made and seconded. All those in favor? unanimous, okay? And when the committee chair is Bert with Jackie and Mitzi, okay? When will you all come back?
I hope before the grass is ready to cut.
Do you guys think we're, we're okay to come back next month with something?
I hope before the grass is ready to cut.
Yeah, yeah, we'll get it before the grass.
Yes.
So we need to do it before next month.
Ain't no month before May anyway.
We can have something together by next month, yeah, maybe we're up, but we could have something together for next month.
Good deal. Thank you all.
Make a raise in your hand, I thought about myself.
I'm gonna give an overarching um description of this next issue, and this issue is about that thick.
Oh, Lord.
Okay. There is a entity in town that we're having a discrepancy, a discrepancy with their water bill, okay? It may get it might go to litigation, okay? Um, I may shut them off. It's not may, I will shut them off. I wanted to go into executive session, but we can't, um, and I want to be careful on what I say.
Careful?
I'm, I'm gonna be careful on, on my words, but there's, um, I have been trying to work. I'm, I'm gonna be careful on, on my words, but there's, um, I have been trying to work with a individual here in town to try to alleviate some issues, um. I was told, um, to go F myself several times, um, which, okay, um, it's not personal, it's professional to me, that's all, all this is professional. It could easily get ugly, wouldn't you say? Um, I've already taken steps, I didn't cut this person off already, because there was somebody else connected to this meter, okay? It's called a downstream meter. I didn't cut them off, um, because of a downstream meter. That other individual, they, they needed that water, so I didn't cut off the, the head, um. But now, we've rectified that. They have their own water, the downstream meter has its own water, and I am well within my rights to shut off this meter.
Just for non-payment, or?
Yes. And discrepancy in their thought process of billing, okay? And their thought process, there used to be two meters at this place. It's a, it's convoluted, it's a convoluted mess, um, it's been going on for many years, I've got back to nineteen seventy-six for meter readings. Okay, meter readings from nineteen seventy-six here, so I hope it doesn't go that far, but it may, so, just wanna give you all a heads up that it's.
So their, their dispute is not on the rate, it's on the quantity?
That's correct.
Is that what you're saying?
Um, I have, with the help of Arkansas Municipal League, I offered them a settlement amount. They drafted the settlement, municipal league drafted it, um, I presented it to them, and that's when this individual said, go, whatever, um, so.
How far behind are they?
Right now, it's August of last year. So. Anyways.
I'll say it, cut them.
I'll, I'm, we're doing it, um, just taking the right steps, um, it was, yeah. I did wanna shut it off in the middle of the freezing winter because, just because, now we're in better weather, and I'm sick of it, I'm done.
So are they saying they've overpaid this whole time?
There's a discrepancy, let's just say there's a discrepancy in their thought process of the billing.
Okay.
Anyways. Yeah. And I, I put together a package, so that I, I say a package, with help from municipal league, um, a fair settlement, um. There's a settlement agreement, and that's when I was told to go get bent, so.
Is there a time limit on them signing the settlement agreement, or?
I'm drafting a letter, I started today to, we've already shut off, but we didn't shut off properly, okay? We have to give notice to shut off, have to.
Okay.
We're going through the process to shut off this meter properly, okay? I am giving ten days to get this account in.
There you go.
Paid, okay, and then I'm coming to shut off. Um, Alex will, but that's just where we're at.
So how does that, what's the normal flow with that, is when you get to that point with somebody? Is that a decision you make, or is it a decision the council makes, or?
No, it's not.
Do we make a motion, or?
Nope.
Okay.
No, well, it's not. In, in the new ordinance, it's spelled out.
Okay.
Okay, it wasn't ever spelled out, it's spelled out now.
Yeah.
Um, in the new ordinance, so.
August was a long time ago.
Yeah. So. Said that to say, I'm fed up. Brad?
I said my turn.
Your turn.
Well, good evening, I'm here for you tonight to discuss an issue that we have with fire department. One of our tankers, the tank on it has rusted through in several spots, and we bubble gum fixed one of them, but there's others. That tank is twenty-five years old. Um, I've checked into getting a new one constructed. It's actually just a little bit bigger, it'll hold a little bit more water than the previous one. And cost, total cost would be, top dollar on that would be thirteen thousand five hundred. That's thirty-five hundred dollars for materials, no more than ten thousand for labor. The man that gave me the bid, not the bid, the quote on that, he just figured himself three weeks, he doesn't think it's gonna take him three weeks, but he wanted to cover himself. So, how much did you say the fire department has in their account right now?
I think right now, we're at about forty.
Okay, and the general fund has how much right now?
The general?
Yes.
The city, the city generals?
Uh, I think right at about two million.
Okay. What I come to ask tonight was, to get this done, to get it built, with, take seventy-five hundred out of the fire department's account, and no more than six out of the city general. Fire department's half will be, part will be fixed at seventy-five hundred. Anything that doesn't take the dollar amount that I'm talking about is less, so, if we don't need the full six out of the general fund, we won't take the full six out of the general fund. It'll just be whatever. And this particular truck, it's one of our tankers, we have to haul water to, anywhere there's not a fire hydrant, we have to haul water with this to fight fire with. And we also fight brush fires with this, it, it leaves behind our brush truck, it leaves behind our pumpers, we use it for about everything. And there are, if, that's just not outside the city limits, we have got quite a bit of area in the city limits that we would have to use tankers too, so this is not just something we use out of town. This is something that gets used in town too. And where I'm talking about in town is Shell Station, Assembly of God Church, Dollar Store, Baptist Church on the left side, Humane Society. Um, I'm not sure if Circle M's in, in the city limits, but any of our highway sixty-five there, beyond either ways, is gonna have to be haul water.
Is this, is this a single tanker that you get, is there, is any other tankers?
We have two.
You have two, okay.
Yes.
Is this one equivalent size of the other one, or are there any difference in sizes?
Uh, not, right now, the tank that's on it's nineteen hundred and twenty-five gallon, our other one's twenty-three hundred and thirty-five.
Okay.
When we get done with this one, it'll be in the neighborhood of twenty-two seventy-five.
But you're, but you're, right now, it, it's not quite fifty, it's almost fifty percent of your, your capacity that you,
Yes.
that you're, if you have the chance of not, just going in, it won't even be there.
Right.
When it goes completely out, which it will.
Mm-hmm.
So let me, let me clarify this, you want seventy-five hundred out of?
Fire department.
Fire department.
Up to six out of, out of city general. Fire departments will be fixed at seventy-five hundred. The cities, the general will not be fixed, it's just, say, it doesn't take thirteen five, say it only takes eleven, it would be seventy-five hundred out of the city, not city, sorry, seventy-five hundred out of the fire departments. Above that, out of city general, so ours will be fixed, the one of, this part of it out of the city general will be flexible.
Um, Richard, I know you're on the fire department. Is that all, Brad?
That's, that's pretty much it, nutshell.
Thank you. Um. I think I've seen you fix this tank, or work on a patch, I think, I think it's the same one, it's a white truck.
Yes, the white tanker, yes.
The, the difference in, uh, we have two trucks, the, the red tanker will not pump water. The, the truck we're talking about now has a one hundred foot red line, and a two and a half inch hose you can spray water with either one, cause it has a pump. That's the big difference why we use this tanker much more than the other.
The other one's strictly water shut.
Water just for hauling water.
Oh, I got you. So it's not, so it's, it's a lot more than fifty percent capacity, it's your whole capacity when it goes, other than just hauling water.
We can actually, right, we can actually find our, if we need to.
Okay.
But yes, I, I have been trying to fix leaks on it.
Yes.
So how does, so looking at our budget, uh, yeah, that's seventy-five hundred, Brad, how bad does that hurt you for, like, we're showing equipment repairs, a, a budget of eleven-five, and in operation and maintenance, twelve. Does that, I know it's on, I know it was not as, it wasn't budgeted this thing, so.
No, this is a surprise.
How bad does that hurt you, the rest of your year around, you know, known repairs or known maintenance and stuff that you know you've gotta do still? Does that make sense?
Right, as far as known repairs, I don't know of any other big ticket items this year.
At least two of the trucks we have new tires on, so that's out of the question, that was from previous.
Oh, is there decent?
Yeah, the, the rest of the equipment and previous.
Pumps are okay.
As far as I know.
So is this a thing where, um, it might be worth going to Buffalo River Group?
Well, I, I don't think so, I think this, I think we have the, the money. Brad has money in his account, in, in the fire department, I mean, I think that's what it's there for. I mean, I think, you know, and I, what about Act eight thirty-three?
The Act eight thirty-three that we get will, this could be, our portion of this could be used against Act eight thirty-three, when we have to produce receipts what we spend our Act eight thirty-three money on. This will pretty much take care of most of what we'll get for Act eight thirty-three, so you don't have to do a lot of receipt hunting.
Okay, we get money from the, from the government for Act eight thirty-three, it's a, it's a, a fund for the fire department, so.
Okay, eleven thousand.
And the rea, the reason why I ask for some out of the general and out of the fire department, that way the fire department doesn't take a real big hit, and put us down into twenty-something thousand, which I'm not comfortable with, at the price of everything now.
But you're at forty, so, I mean, it's, I don't, I haven't seen the books, but.
Yeah, that's.
I, I'm entertaining motions to, to help, um, I, I feel like that tanker, it goes out on al- almost all the brush fires, I, almost all. It's, I do know that.
It goes with the brush truck.
Um.
Did you say how long you thought it might take to?
Well, the labor he figured out was three weeks, but he said it probably would take him three weeks, he just wanted to get a figure that would cover him.
He can get the, the tank itself, he can, he can acquire pretty, pretty quickly?
Yes. 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 How much is Act eight thirty-three? Typically, I wanna say it's been about seven, eight thousand, I think that's about what it is.
Yeah.
This says eleven on here, is that something different?
No, that's, that's just a budget.
Okay, gotcha.
Didn't have anything.
Okay.
Okay, gotcha.
So when Alan does his, when he's, we've gotta do paperwork on that every year, and when Alan goes to do it next year, this, that will also, that'd be a pretty easy cut and dry thing, when he does, gets ready to do the paperwork for that.
It'd be one, one bit.
Yeah, in twenty-six.
Okay.
So then, I make a motion that we go up to six thousand out of the city fund to help with the fire department.
And what about the fire department money?
They will do seventy-five hundred out of fire department.
Is that included in your motion?
Yes, it is.
Got a motion made to allow the fire department to spend seventy-five hundred dollars towards the repair, rebuild of a new tank for their tanker, um, and sixty-five, six, up to six thousand out of general fund, that's the motion.
I'll second.
Motion made and seconded. Any more discussion? All those in favor? Congratulations, Brad.
Thank you.
Thank you. Oh, thank you.
That is all that I have on my agenda, um.
I have a quick question.
Yes.
So, the bridge, they haven't done what they were going to, because you know, there's that big pothole there?
Yes.
That will all be addressed later on, correct? Okay, that was my only question.
Um, one other thing that's on my radar right now is, um, I'm looking for a, a solution for our sewer plant dump truck, okay, our, our truck right now is, um, not, it's, it's not a good viable solution, so I'm looking for a good used dump truck, I don't know what that's gonna look like at this point, but looking for it, so.
So what is the dump truck gonna be hauling?
Dirt.
Dirt, okay.
Yeah, I mean, it's when he goes to, no, 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 when he goes to these, when he digs up roads, when he digs up, um, he has to haul the, the debris away, and that's, and then it's either, since our dump truck is broke, okay? Um, he has to take it and backhoe one at a time, and it's time and. Um, but I'm looking into getting that taken care of, so. That's all I have, next meeting will be the seventh of April, um, at seven PM same time, any other comments, council? With that, thank you all for your attendance. I need a motion made to adjourn in a second. All those in favor?
I have a question now.
Ma'am.
About the, uh, charging station?
Yes, ma'am.
Are the, are they going to be the high-speed charging stations?
They're not level three, they'll be level two.
Okay, and, uh, will they be metered, or how are you gonna pay?
So we aren't paying for them, okay, um.